This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the February 7th, 2024 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. At this time, I would ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to our township website for public access. At this time, I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public and virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the board of commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and then may proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce the board of commissioners did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, this is opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening who'd like to address the board? Anyone online, Dave? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5. We have our meeting minutes from the January 17th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. They've been distributed to the board in advance for your review. Are there any comments or questions on the minutes as presented? May I have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Then to Item 6A, ordinances for discussion only. We have an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part 1 Administrative Legislation, Chapter 58, Pensions, Article 2, Deferred Compensation Plan of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township to reestablish and restate the Deferred Compensation Plan, amend the plan document in use for said plan, and providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please present.
Thank you. So the 457B Deferred Compensation Plan is a voluntary plan offered by the township in which plan participants may make contributions that are not matched by the township. The plan allows for pre-tax deductions of any amount contributed into the plan consistent with IRS regulations. So upon review of the existing plan documents and ordinance which allows this 457B plan to be in place at the township, the ordinance had not been amended since its first adoption in February of 1993, and the plan documents were specific to the plan administrators or the investment managers. So with that, after receiving approval from the board of commissioners, the township pension attorney was engaged for the purpose of assisting the township with developing a new amended 457B plan document that is consistent with township practices and all updated IRS regulations. So the plan document accomplishes the following. It is specific to South Whitehall Township. It would not run with an investment manager. It allows additional investment managers to be approved by the township as determined to be appropriate in conjunction with the pension committee. It would also provide more clear and concise guidance to township officials as well as plan administrators and plan participants, both former and current, on what is permitted in terms of administrative actions. So for example, plan withdrawals, planned emergency withdrawals, contribution limits, and loans, all to be consistent with IRS regulations. So with that, the plan document that is included for tonight's agenda has been reviewed with the police union, has been reviewed with the two investment managers, which are Nationwide and Valick/Corbridge, is also sent to the Public Works Union. We've not received comments back from the Public Works Union, but we don't anticipate any substantive revisions as a result of their review. And we have also prepared a draft ordinance to implement and effectuate the provisions of the revised plan document, which was also reviewed by the pension committee on Wednesday, January 24th, this past year, or this past month, I'm sorry, and the pension committee took action to recommend that the board of commissioners approve the plan document and the corresponding ordinance. With that, I would motion to approve the advertisement of the draft ordinance amendment to Chapter 58, Article 2 of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township to implement the revised plan document for the 457B plan.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. I want to do thank you and staff and the pension committee for working to revise this document to bring it forth tonight for our consideration. I'll open it up to the board if anyone has any comments or questions before we move to advertise the ordinance. No comments. Are there any public comments on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to advertise said ordinance?
Make a motion.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five to zero. Then to Item 6B for discussion only. An ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part 2, General Legislation, Chapter 336, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Restrictions on Size, Weight, and Type of Vehicle and Load of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township to amend Section 336-31 Truck Traffic Restricted on Certain Streets to provide for a truck traffic prohibition on Ridgeview Drive between Walbert Avenue and Huckleberry Road to provide for a repealer clause, retention of rights to enforce, severability clause, and an effective date. And I'll ask our township manager to review this agenda item for us.
Thank you. So the township engineer was previously engaged to provide an analysis of restricting truck traffic on Ridgeview Drive from Walbert Avenue to Huckleberry Road. Additionally, the township engineer was also engaged to conduct an analysis of the intersection of Ridgeview Drive and Walbert Avenue to determine the effects of allowing trucks on Ridgeview Drive from Bulldog Drive to Walbert Avenue. So the township engineer did provide a summary of their findings and indicated that it would be appropriate to restrict truck traffic on Ridgeview Drive from Walbert Avenue to Huckleberry Road. The primary reason being that PennDOT regulations allow you to restrict truck traffic when it is clear that the surface of the roadway is impacted and deteriorating as a result of truck traffic. So the township engineer has indicated that that condition is in effect for this section of the local roadway, and so an ordinance would be required to actually implement that truck traffic restriction. So draft ordinance is enclosed or included in tonight's agenda for your review. So it's important to note that in the Township Codes, emergency traffic and local deliveries would not be restricted per 33631. So even if you were to restrict truck traffic from essentially what would be Parkland Drive all the way through to the end of Huckleberry, I'm sorry, yeah, no, I'm sorry, for Ridgeview from Parkland all the way down to Huckleberry, it's already restricted from Parkland to Walbert. So you would be restricting it then additionally from Walbert to Huckleberry. If you were to implement that, you'd still be able to allow for a local deliveries and emergency access. So that would be the first piece. The second piece of this is that the township engineer determined it would be not appropriate to allow trucks on Ridgeview from Bulldog Drive to Walbert due to the existing geometry and limited turning movements of the intersection in the roadway. So with that, the ordinance that was provided for you tonight would be necessary to effectuate the full truck restriction from Huckleberry to Parkland Drive. Still allowing trucks, though, to access from Bulldog to 309.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. I'll open it up to the board if there are any questions or comments on this.
So what's the size limit? What would the, I mean, if, like, Tall Timbers wants to drive their single axle dump truck, would that be lim, would that be?
Yes, we have signage on there, but it would be above the size of a dump truck.
All right. So my next question is, what's about the enforcement? So we have trucks on Wilbrook Road, FedEx, needs to turn right, go over the bridge, and cause problems, et cetera. What kind of enforcement, how would we enforce that?
Just like any other commercial vehicle, we have a mix-up officers. We could do weights and measures and weigh the vehicle to see whether or not they're overweight. We do a full-blown inspection on the vehicle and essentially just cite it for traveling on a roadway, not for trucks. So are pretty significant fines as well.
Tony, before we go any further, did you have any over, an overview of comments?
No, I think Tom did a great job and summarized it. We have plans in there that shows the signage, but besides that, we agree with everything.
Very good. Thank you.
I do have a quick question. Besides the road condition, which is obvious, was there anything else that precipitated the study? Are there complaints by residents or anything like that? It was strictly the road condition?
It was the road. It was also, all of this stemmed actually from an LTAP review that was conducted late last year. So we had also taken a look at a number of other items along that entire corridor. So this is just one piece of what we had looked at. Some of the other things we had looked at was the intersection of Church Road and Huckleberry Road, determine if additional relocated signing would improve motorist awareness. That also was recommended. So we would, once this ordinance is adopted, basically put in a bulk sign order for all the signs that you had seen depicted in the township engineer's review. But that was the primary driver of this was the LTAP onsite inspection.
Okay, thank you. And I also wanted to thank whoever included the diagrams that really made it very easy to follow because it could get confusing. And I do have another question. Is this, trucks often use their own Navi. Is this something, these roads, will they be incorporated into some type of database when trucks use those specific navigation tools?
Ostensibly, yes.
Okay. Not saying that they always are accurate, but
Right.
How that worked. Okay, thank you.
I have a question as well. Has there been an issue specifically on this stretch of road with trucks, larger trucks traveling specifically?
I'll defer to police on that.
We haven't had any major issues, but it does create a traffic issue, and a lot of times they'll come out of Bulldog and try to go northbound, and it ties up traffic at the intersection that's already congested to begin with because it's very difficult for them to make the turn without going into the opposite lane. So it does create an issue. It backs up traffic there, especially during rush hour. So there's been issues, but we haven't had any crashes or anybody's been hurt. So that's, we want to make sure that we get ahead of that.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Any other board comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to send the ordinance for legal review? So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five to zero. Then to Item 7A, Resolutions. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the execution of an agreement for financial advisory services with PFM Financial Advisors LLC for the completion of a water and sewer rate revenue requirement study. And Tom, if you would present.
Thank you. Township administration is recommending that South Whitehall Township conduct a water and sewer rate revenue requirement study in order to accomplish the following goals. Ensure future revenues and expenditures for the water and sewer, public utility systems are adequately forecast, to establish a baseline prior to the completion of the Kleins Island Sewer System Act 537 Plan update and related capital improvements, to ensure equitable rates are charged for both water and sewer utilities, and that sufficient revenues are produced to sustain the operations and capital requirements of the system. Account for the following: future capital projects, growth or decline in sewer customers, operations and maintenance expenses, debt service, service agreements, trends in water and sewer usage, as well as other variables that affect future rates, and provide fiscal decision-makers with the data and information required to access the potential future trajectory of utility rates. In this way, township management and the governing body can help to work together to develop a long-term fiscal plan for utility planning that can be implemented effectively and that serves the best interests of the community, and finally, to receive and interpret in financial information to assess strategically the short and long-term fiscal condition of the community water and sewer systems. So following any discussion, we are requesting approval from the board of commissioners in the form of a resolution to authorize the township manager to execute the agreement for financial advisory services with PFM Financial Advisors to conduct the study. The total cost is $17,500, which covers both water and sewer, and $8,750 would come out of the water fund. Sewer fund would also be $8,750, and any incidental costs, if there was mileage and so forth, and reproduction of documents, that would be encumbered as part of the PO. It would be, it would fall within the tolerable thresholds. We would endeavor to hold the consultant to the maximum cost of $17,500.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. How long do you expect that this study will take to complete?
I believe it'll take several months.
And there was a comment on, I'm not able to open my tablet, but on page 10, this was not a full-cost service study, and the option was to explore changes to customer allocations. And if that was something the township desired, we would need to do a study with the township engineer. Is that something that's also a consideration for the township after the study is complete?
Yes, we would take the initial preliminary findings and then assess whether that's necessary.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up to the board for questions.
I think this is a very wise and necessary step. It'll provide us with revenue stability and predictability, and also transparency. We'll know exactly what we need going forward, especially with Kleins Island coming forth and the infrastructure repairs that will require. I was wondering if the public will have any type of engagement throughout, or will let them know through the website, or will they be involved? Will there be any meetings or?
Yes, we plan to have a meeting. So the final deliverable will actually be in PowerPoint format. So we would invite the consultant to attend a public meeting and release their findings in that format.
Thank you. How will this study help the township? I know we're looking at future changes and future costs for the township with Kleins Island. This is one of the reasons why we're embarking on this, is to help us with the predictions for what we have down the road with Kleins Island upgrades.
Correct. We want to ensure that we are charging a fair and equitable rate, especially given the fact that there, you know, without knowing the final cost of the Kleins Island required capital improvements, it's going to be significant. And we want to ascertain whether it makes more sense for us to be part of a, you know, a debt service that LCA would be taking on, or do we want to try to incrementally account for, you know, paying off more principal upfront? We want to run all those analyses to see what's most advantageous to the tax, to the rate payers in this case.
And has the township ever done a water and sewer rate and revenue study to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge.
Very good. Thank you.
If they had, it was done a long time ago, and maybe it was done by the authority, and that, I'm just not aware of it.
Thank you.
When do you think the LCA will give us an idea of what the cost of that Kleins Island will be?
We will have that this year, probably by June-ish, July.
Then you'll say we'll have to make a decision whether we want to be part of the debt service or basically pay our part on our own.
Yes. But to be clear, you will be involved on how that is structured in terms of the payment. Each governing body of the communities that are part of the Kleins Island Sewer System will have input on how the final payment arrangement is developed. So while we are having these discussions with LCA right now, you will, as the board of commissioners, have to be involved with the final structure of that. And there will be a public meeting to that effect, so.
Any other board comments or questions? Are there any public comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for financial advisory services with PFM Financial Advisors for the completion of a water and sewer rate revenue requirement study?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five to zero. Then to Item 7B, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the delivery of real estate tax duplicates pursuant to Section 1712 of the First Class Township Code. And I'll ask Tom to present.
Thank you. Section 1712 of the First Class Township Code requires the board of commissioners to basically deliver a duplicate of the assessment of the township taxes to the township tax collector, together with the board's warrant for collection of taxes, either 30 days after adoption of the budget or within 30 days after receipt of their assessment roll from the county. So in this case, we're following the latter. We received the assessment roll electronically from the county on January 22nd, so we're within that 30-day window. So it asks the board to approve the resolution as submitted.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution authorizing the delivery of real estate tax duplicates pursuant to Section 1712 of the First Class Township Code?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five to zero. Resolution 7C, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of South Whitehall, Lehigh County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving the adjustment of the actuarial interest rate assumption in effect for all South Whitehall Township defined benefit pension plans from 7.625% to 7.5%, approving the utilization of five-year actuarial value of assets, asset smoothing, as an asset valuation method, approving these revisions to actuarial assumptions for the Act 205 Valuation Report due to be filed with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on or before March 31st, 2024. Tom, if you'd present.
Thank you. So following discussion and a review of alternatives, the pension committee recommended during its Wednesday, October 25th, meeting that South Whitehall Township adjusts the interest rate assumption from 7.625% to 7.5% and to utilize asset smoothing over a five-year period, or the Act 205 Valuation Report that is due to be filed with the Commonwealth of PA on or before March 31st of 2024. And that would be guiding the defined benefit pension plans that are in place for the townships. That would be the office personnel, public works, and police. So currently, the township does not utilize asset smoothing, and the plan is based on the market value of the planned assets. So looking at the actual results over the last year, the township is essentially taking the option to spread out the investment losses over a maximum period of five years, and also lower the interest rate at the same time to better align it with what the actual rate of return has been over the last five years or so. So it actually has the dual accomplishment of raising the funded percentage of each plan above the 70% threshold, and also better setting up the township for the future to not anticipate from an actuarial standpoint gains in investments that are way too high in the real, actual investment returns that we've seen. So this resolution essentially effectuates the previous action the board took on both of those items, so that there is a clear record of what actions were taken. And this is in conjunction with the recommendations set forth by the pension committee during its meeting held on January 24th.
Very good, Tom. Thank you. Again, thank you to you and your team, as well as the pension committee throughout the last year for your work to bring this to the board for consideration. I'll open it up to the commissioners if there are any comments or questions. Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution approving the adjustment of the actuarial interest rate assumption in effect for all South Whitehall Township defined benefit pension plans as explained by the township manager?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five to zero. Then to Item 7D, we have a resolution to grant an on-lot sewage disposal waiver and enter into an indemnification agreement. I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to present this agenda item.
So what we have before us is a waiver request from state DEP septic requirements. So during the permitting process, I think it was originally a septic repair permit, the sewage enforcement officer, Chris Knoll, who's actually here tonight, discovered, determined that the replacement system could not be located within the required distance. I included in the memo all of the regulations that pertain, because this is the first one I've seen, so it's probably the first one you guys have seen. So we have an idea of why we're here and how the process works. So they can request a waiver from the governing body. We're relying on the sewage enforcement officer recommendations because they're the experts. So if there's questions, he's here to answer those. And there's an agreement that's been drafted that includes groundwater monitoring to kind of protect the homeowner and the township and moving forward.
Very good. Thank you, David. Good evening, Chris. Welcome. Did you have any comments for us as a general overview? We've got
Step up to the mic.
Come to the microphone. I'm sorry. Make sure it's turned on. We have people watching. Nope, press the button.
Bush. Check, check. There we go. Yes, I'm assuming you all got a copy of my letter describing the situation. So yes, the provisions of the regulation allow that waiver to be granted. We've looked at it. We're taking that existing cesspool, going to abandon that, and it's going to be an elevated sand mound, and it'll be, you know, a few feet further away. So based on the lot lines that are there, the other well on the adjacent property, which we don't want to encroach on, this is the location that's available for the location of this new absorption area. We're allowed to do it. We have the agreement in place, or ready for adoption, or signage by everyone involved. So I think we're pretty much ready to go.
Very good. Thank you. Let me open up to the board if there are any comments or questions.
Did you have to repark it at all?
Yes. Yeah. And we're right in the corner, as far away from that well as we can possibly get.
Not going to be any secondary. There's probably no room for one, correct?
There's no room. No. No, they tore down part of the building already, so, yeah. One of those old lots that are just
I know.
10 pounds in a five-pound bag.
Are there any other board comments? Are there any public comments on this agenda item? Nothing online? Okay, hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution granting a waiver for 2539 Peachtree Road?
I'll make a waiver.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five to zero. Thank you, and good luck with your project. Then to Item 7E, we have a resolution granting a waiver of certain subdivision and land development ordinance review and approval requirements for a plan entitled Tesla Electric Vehicle Charging Stations, Wawa 8078, Allentown, Pennsylvania. And I'll ask our planner, Greg Adams, to please.
Thank you. This is an application to further develop the property located at 408 South Cedar Crest Boulevard. The application proposes the restriping of a 10-space parking area to an eight-space charging station and the installation of the associated equipment within the parking lot of the Wawa on the 10.1075 acre property. This is an application to waive the land development process, the process which is outlined in SALDO Section 31248. The application proposes an improvement that does not trigger outside agency reviews. However, the application has received all staff and recommending board reviews appropriate to the improvements proposed. The township has the ability to send the project to planning commission and also to impose any conditions appropriate to the approval of the application. So as an FYI, there have been two recent reviews that haven't been included in the agenda packet for the evening. The first is a zoning officer's review, which was distributed to The first is a zoning officer's review, which was distributed to the Board earlier this evening, and her comments pertain to parking. The Public Safety Commission reviewed the plan at their Monday evening meeting and had no comments to it. So we have Mike Testa of Tesla here to present the plan and answer questions. And the applicant has accepted the approval conditions listed on the resolution.
Thank you, Greg. Welcome, Mr. Testa.
Hi.
Is your microphone on?
What's that?
Is your microphone turned on?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, so I guess, do you need any more details? I guess Greg summarized it pretty well. There is one clarifying thing I would like to note. In the letter from the zoning officer, it says converting the ten spaces into eight. We are still maintaining ten total. So yeah, just point of clarification. So there's ten spaces there now, but they're striped larger, I think on average about ten feet, or maybe slightly larger. We're installing eight of our charging posts, but at a nine-foot parking width. So we're actually maintaining the ten total, and then placing our eight charges. Just point of clarification.
Very good. Before I open to the Board of Commissioners for questions, I do want to ask our Township Engineer if you had any engineering comments or overview for the Board.
We reviewed this plan a few times, went back and forth regarding previous cover, such other issues. At this point, they're down to some drafting issues on the plan itself. So we have no objections to this plan moving forward.
Very good. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to the Board for questions.
I just have a couple of questions, and these sort of all pertain to maybe what you've seen with similarly sized projects in similar locations. Is there a particular time of day or peak hours when Tesla or EV owners tend to use charging stations? Like, is this... Or does it vary sort of throughout the day?
To be honest, it varies throughout the day, just like it would at the gas station. Folks will hit it on their way to work, folks will hit it at lunchtime, on their way home. So we don't typically see too peaky of trends.
Okay. And what's the... And maybe you don't... There's not a specific answer here, but what's the average length of a charge when someone stops and charges their vehicle?
Yeah, I would say about twenty minutes is a good estimate. If you pull in with about ten percent battery remaining, you can charge up to about eighty-five percent, about twenty minutes.
And if individuals are looking to charge their vehicle, if they're passing through, I know Tesla's technology is certainly incredibly advanced, are they notified that if, say, all eight charging stations were to be currently being utilized? Or are they notified that, hey, they're all being used right now? My concern being people waiting to use the station, and then you have other EVs lined up in some of the regular parking spots, waiting until one of those spots become available?
Yep. Yeah. So on the user interface, it will actually say how many, up to X amount of posts available at that charge rate. So yeah, it will give some indication as to congestion.
And then, just building off of that, in any other plans, this is obviously post-implementation, have you seen any issues with respect to lines or waiting, or does it generally move?
I mean, there certainly are sites in Pennsylvania. I mean, we've had a pretty congested site down in Philly, which we've built around the surrounding areas and have resolved. But I mean, certainly for this site, we wouldn't expect there to be, you know, a long line of waiters by any means.
And again, in similar projects, have you seen that it's mostly Tesla owners utilizing these charging stations, or other types of EVs with converters? What's... Is there sort of a breakdown that you've seen?
Yeah. So I mean, up until, well, like, this month, I mean, it was essentially Tesla only. We have had some posts out there with an adapter on it, very few amount of posts that would allow other vehicles to charge. But starting this month, you may have seen some of the stuff in the news. A lot of the other OEMs, manufacturers, have been adopting the NACS plug, the North American Charging Standard, which is essentially the Tesla plug. So starting very soon now, there will start to be others. I think Ford will be one of the first ones that gains access to a lot of the charging posts that are already deployed. So historically, it has only been Tesla. Moving forward, though, it will essentially be everybody. There is a few holdouts, but essentially everybody.
And my last question is just more general in nature, from my own personal knowledge. Do you know approximately what percentage of Tesla owners, or maybe EV owners as a whole, have home charging stations? Not necessarily the trickle charger or the full charger, but is that data available, or don't you know just because of...
I don't have any idea.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Apologize.
I had a couple of questions as well. Are the charging stations open twenty-four hours a day?
Yes.
Is the Wawa store open the same hours?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I believe it is. Yeah.
Very good.
I think it is, too.
Is it? Okay. And I didn't specifically note it on the plan, but I have a question. When someone is charging their vehicle, I'm assuming they may walk over to the store to make a purchase. Is there going to be any changes to pedestrian pathway with signage or markings on the pavement to designate the safest way to get between the charging station and the store?
We had no plans for that, given that they were existing parking stalls today. So the same foot traffic would go back and forth today as it would with charging stations.
Okay. And do you have any idea typically, in this type of setup, how many customers in a week you may have?
Yeah. So in a week, I mean, we could do some math. This site, we'd estimate probably around seven to eight hundred a month. So not too, too many. Talking about, I guess, thirty a day? Three a day? Three a day? So twenty or so a week, on average.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question. If you go stop there to get your car charged, would she stay with the vehicle the whole time it's being charged, or could you leave and go into the store?
Nope. You can, yeah, you can leave and walk into the store.
I know.
Hey, I do have a quick question, too. In my packet, there wasn't anything about lighting from the lighting consultant. Do you have any new information on that? Or can you kind of walk us through as where things will be relocated? Will lighting be adequate? Or do you know anything more?
So we don't... I talked to Greg about that. We don't have any updated lighting plans. We're essentially just shifting... I think we're shifting one of the existing light... Well, yeah, both. So there's two lights there now. One, we're shifting over just two parking stalls to the right, and the other one, we're shifting just a few feet to, like, the northeast. So we don't have an updated lighting plan. All things considered, the lights are essentially unchanged by just a few feet.
And my other question, Commissioner Roth hit on. I just had a concern with queuing, because we know we're going more and more towards this in the future, and I wanted to make sure that there was a safe flow of traffic and vehicles that would potentially be waiting to charge, because it's not like fueling. It's, you know, twenty minutes to sometimes an hour, from what I understand. So the queuing, would they just park at a different place in the parking lot and wait? Or do you have any kind of queuing plan or anything? Do you anticipate it even, you know?
Yeah. So again, for this site, I mean, it would not be anticipated that we would have a line of vehicles waiting. This site's really just to help bolster this Allentown area off seventy-eight, three oh nine. There's a few other charging stations in the surrounding area. So again, we wouldn't expect it here. So no, we didn't have any plans for how vehicles would queue.
I have a question. So the technology in Tesla, you can bring it up, and they show you the charging stations as you go. And maybe you can't answer that, because it's strategic, whatever. So along the seventy-eight corridor, which is why you probably picked this Wawa, do you have any other plans to put any there? So as I'm coming from New Jersey, I bring it up, and there's, you know, this one. What else do you have? Do you have any other in the queue to address some of the people having to come off the highway and saying, oh, now there's a line versus there's going to be others along the corridor?
Well, I mean, just in this surrounding area, I think we have the one at Shance Road, the Wawa Shance Road. We have Tillman Square. This will be the third one right in the area. Then we have another one down at Hamburg, and we're looking to continue to build out seventy-eight.
Nothing to the east?
We have one up in Tatumie Eastern area. Off the top of my head.
I was just wondering.
It was being built before I was part of the team, so I don't know off the top of my head. I could...
That's fine. As long as we were addressing about the queue, and, you know, like I said, you can bring up the technology in the car, that they can see other places where they could go to charge along the corridor.
Absolutely. Yep. And that's something where, you know, Pennsylvania is putting a lot of effort into helping to build out the corridor, so we're full steam.
Very good. Are there any other comments from the Board? Are there any public comments on this agenda item? Nothing online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution granting waiver of certain SALDO review and approval requirements for plan entitled Tesla Electric Vehicle Charging Stations, Wawa eight zero seven eight?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Very good. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Moving on to Agenda Item eight A, motions. We have a motion to proceed with the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Ford F three fifty with snowplow and power lift gate. I'll ask our Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, to please present.
Thank you. Public Works is respectfully asking for a motion to proceed with ordering a twenty twenty-four Ford F three fifty with snowplow and power lift gate. The price of this vehicle is eighty-two thousand. Public Works has solicited six quotes to ensure that we are getting the best price for this truck. The current vehicle that this will be replacing is a two thousand eleven Ford F three fifty with a utility body, which has around seventy-five thousand miles. This truck has undercarriage rusting issues, along with utility body issues. The reason for adding the power lift gate to this truck is so we can load the concrete saw on and off, along with heavy supplies that are needed on job sites. And just to clarify, this truck is going to be a leftover from the dealer, so the cabin chassis will be a twenty twenty-three. And the utility body, the lift, the power lift gate, and the snowplow will be the twenty twenty-four version. It is all compatible with a twenty twenty-three leftover. The reason we decided to go with the twenty twenty-three leftover cabin chassis was the twenty twenty-four just had a price increase for upfits, which actually took us over budget. So that's why we went the route of going back to the cabin chassis that is on-site at Whitmoyer now. But even though the cabin chassis is here, this truck, we will not see this truck before end of June, early July, at the earliest. The utility body in that still has to be built for it. So we will not have to make a payment until July, at the earliest, maybe even later in the year.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. I'll open up to the Board for any comments or questions. Are there any public comments on this? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you.
Agenda item eight B, we have a motion to proceed with advertising of the road building materials bid to include blacktop, stone, sealants, and concrete products. And Herb, if you'd present again?
Thank you. South Whitehall Township Public Works Department is requesting permission to advertise a road building materials bid, which includes blacktop, stone, sealants, and concrete products. Attached to this memo is the complete bid specification for your reference. These materials are used for ongoing maintenance of the road repairs, of the restoration of roads due to water breaks throughout the township. Public Works Department has also included the quantities for the twenty twenty-four roadway resurfacing project, which has been approved in the twenty twenty-four budget for the streets' construction. Again, this will be a one-year contract with the option for three one-year extensions in the bid.
Very good.
But again, as you'll know, we will make sure the bid is comparable to the CoStar pricing, also like we did last year.
Excellent. Thank you, Herb. Any board questions on this agenda item? Public comment? Anybody have any questions? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Agenda item eight C, we have a motion to proceed with advertising of bid specifications twenty twenty-four dash oh one for the River Road Relocation Widening Project as part of the overall Jordan Creek Greenway Project. And Tom, if you'd present?
Thank you. So the River Road Relocation Widening is part of the overall Jordan Creek Greenway Project, so specifically Weir Mill Road to Lap Road, segments forty-one to forty-five, which will be constructed in twenty twenty-four, primarily with funds furnished by a one-million-dollar TASSA PENDOC grant. So the River Road project, however, is not funded by the TASSA PENDOC grant and must utilize local township funds. We have budgeted three hundred fifty thousand dollars in township capital funds for the necessary construction activities relative to the River Road Relocation Project. Township Public Works Local Force Account Labor is completing the majority of the scope of the work, including final wearing course signage, fencing, which was originally going to be completed in twenty twenty-three. So we've done the tree work and most of the fencing, but some does remain at this time. But however, it was determined by the engineer for this project, Michael Baker International, that the placement of the retaining wall with the riverstone treatment should be handled by the firm that is supplying these materials. So accordingly, the township has prepared bid specifications for base bid, which would be fabrication and furnishing to the site, two hundred and sixty-two linear feet of forty-two-inch single-face concrete barrier with painted form liner pattern, as well as fabricating and furnishing to the site, fourteen linear feet of end transition, single-face concrete barrier, forty-two-inch height with painted form liner pattern. The two end pieces are seven foot long each. And then the alternate items, installation of two hundred and sixty-two linear feet of forty-two-inch signal, single-face concrete barrier with painted form liner pattern, and fourteen linear feet end of end transition, single-face concrete barrier, forty-two-inch height with painted form liner pattern. Bids would be due by February twenty-sixth at ten AM. There's an onsite meeting February twenty-first, and the bids... I'm sorry, the project completion would be required to be done by April thirtieth. So it's a very narrow timeframe. And tomorrow, there is a pre-construction meeting for the Jordan Creek Project, which we will be coordinating the timing of when Public Works is conducting this work, and when the contractor for the trail will be conducting the work. So we're trying to make sure that everything's aligned perfectly, so that there are no issues.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions on this?
So the three hundred fifteen thousand isn't... It's just part of the work for the River Road?
That's correct. It's part of... It's the relocation, the barrier, as well as some engineering in there, too. But yeah, basically, all, everything from soup to nuts to required to do the River Road relocation. The trail extension is just under a million dollars, which is funded by TASSA grant, which...
Three hundred fifteen seems a little low for River Road. I mean, there's a lot of tree work that needs to be done. There's graves.
Already, yeah. Public Works, because Public Works...
With Public Works and the bucket truck, so we did not have to bring anyone in, along with the fence work and the tree plantings that had to go in in the fall time during the planting season.
Okay.
Yeah, because Public Works is doing the work is the reason it can be so low. Otherwise, it probably would have been double cost.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to thank Public Works for taking care of that and keeping us as low as we can be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to confirm, it's not going to be a Jersey barrier. It's actually going to have a facade that looks...
It's going to function like a Jersey barrier, but look like something nicer.
Nicer.
Yeah. Yes.
That was the goal that I understood.
Are you going to find some street artists to decorate it or something?
If there are no other comments from the Board, is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Then item eight D, we have a motion to proceed with capital purchase from LB Water for three hundred manhole inserts.[1780.88] Then item eight D, we have a motion to proceed with capital purchase from LB Water for three hundred manhole inserts. And Herb, if you'd present, please?
Sure. Public Works is respectfully asking permission to move forward with a capital purchase from LB Water for three hundred manhole inserts. The work is part of the sewer reduction plan that was submitted to DEP with regards to declined island consent order. These inserts help to prevent inflow from the rain events from getting into our sanitary sewer. We have currently installed three hundred of these this year and are looking forward to getting another three hundred installed this year. The price for the three hundred sewer manhole insert pan is eighteen thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. We're asking for a motion for the approval of the three hundred, and this was budgeted in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars in the EPA sewer repair work.
Thank you, Herb. How many sewer manhole inserts do, so we did three hundred last year, three hundred this year? We're going to be doing this for a few years?
Yes.
A lot of manholes. Any board comments or questions?
So I guess you can show the data that the peak flow during rain events is decreasing because of this work, so that the rainwater is not getting into the sewer system.
Yes, we have tell log systems that flow through this, that read the sewer system. We also are doing other things in-house along with these manhole inserts where we have seen pretty significant reductions already. So yes, the next step is after we get these three hundred more inserts in, then we go back and we seal the edge of them with a caulking, or you can even do it with crack seal if you're real careful. So, because we still have to access them. But yes, we are seeing reductions.
And this work will help us as we move forward with Kleins Island. The goal is to have less infiltration through these manholes.
Yes, that's the whole issue during the rain events. All the signatories are peaking and Kleins Island cannot treat it during wet weather scenarios. So that is part of the big issue. All the signatories had to put a standard sewer reduction plan together that was submitted to DEP and LCA as part of the regional five thirty-seven plan. So yes, everyone has one. Everyone is working on it. Everyone's is a little different, though, and unique to their system.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. Any other comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb. And item eight E, we have a motion to proceed with release of security for the following Ridge Farm Security Release Number Two, Hills at Winchester Security Release Number Six, and Parkland Place Security Release Number Four. I will turn it over to Greg Adams. I'm sorry, Tom Petrucci?
I'll turn it over to Greg Adams.
Greg Adams. Okay, I thought so.
Well, thank you. Yes, this is, we have three security releases. That's, I guess a lot of work has gotten done over a mild winter, so we have three projects that have done work, had the work certified and are now requesting releases. So Ridge Farm, this will be security release number two for Phase One A. Hills at Winchester, this is security release number six for that project. And Parkland Place, a very old project, just north of Dorney Park, south of Parkland, Parkway Road? Walnut. Walnut Street, yes. That's security release number four. So that's almost in completion at this point. So basically, we're looking for authorization for the township manager to sign the letters to the financial institutions authorizing the release of the security as defined in all three release packages.
Thank you, Greg. I'll ask our township engineer, did you have any comment on these three security release developments?
No. Ridge Farm sells two point eight million that we're holding, so they're working through, but we sell a lot of security, a lot of work to go. We're not a part of Winchester and then Parkland Place, really wrapping things up. Minor, minor work to be done, but still, still trucking along.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any board comments or questions on this motion?
One that went under, the developer walked? Is that?
No. That was Union Street, I believe.
Okay, I was confused there. I know you said out by Dorney Park there.
Yeah, Park and Place was four, fourteen units.
Okay.
South of Walnut Street, they, they did a little cul-de-sac. It looked like a dumbbell.
All right.
So.
No other comments from the board? Are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Greg. Moving on to agenda item nine, correspondence and information items. I'll ask our township manager to review our boards and commissions.
Thank you. So upcoming meetings are as follows. Thursday, February eighth, tomorrow, seven p.m., Planning Commission. Monday, February twelfth, seven p.m., Parks and Recreation Board. Tuesday, February thirteenth, six p.m., Crime Watch Meeting. Wednesday, February fourteenth, ten a.m., Civil Service Commission. And Wednesday, February twenty first, seven p.m., Board of Commissioners. We are looking to schedule a special meeting on March thirteenth at six p.m. in order to conduct interviews for any vacant and expiring terms for those that have applied. Does that work for all the board members? If so, we will move forward with that scheduling.
Wednesday, the thirteenth of March at six p.m. Is the board in agreement to meet that evening for a special meeting or interviews? Everyone's good? Okay?
Yeah, so we will move forward. Six p.m.
P.m. And there's still time for any citizen who may like to apply?
Yes.
For the boards to submit through the township website?
Yes, and we are still receiving applications.
Very good.
But we welcome all applications.
Absolutely.
Just as a general question, Tom, how many applications do we currently, how many, say, open applications have we, have we received since the last time we did interviews?
I'm going to say somewhere around eight or ten? Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Very good.
How many, for how many positions? Eight or ten applications for roughly?
I'm going to say-
Nine on the screen in front of us.
Like roughly the same amount, yeah.
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 Very good. Moving on to direction and discussion, notification of new accounts for ARPA Fund and Fire Apparatus Fund. Tom, if you'd present?
Thank you. So this is a notification, but South Whitehall Administration has opened two new accounts with Unives Bank for the amount of a million dollars each for both of the respective township funds identified as follows: American Rescue Plan Act Fund and the Fire Apparatus Fund. So the funds were transferred from Wells Fargo to Unives in order to receive the benefit of a higher annual percentage yield, specifically five point two five percent, which is available through the Unives Bank Public Funds Money Market Account. So what they do is they have a floating rate that is equal to the federal funds rate, which is currently five point five percent, minus point two five percent. While the Federal Reserve will likely lower the interest rates later this year, the current monthly revenue would be four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars for each fund until the rate is lowered. No actions required as these accounts technically remain under the parent funds of ARPA and Fire Apparatus.
Very good, Tom. Thank you for keeping the board up to date on these types of issues and for looking to maximize the interest income on these accounts. I appreciate your diligence. Agenda item ten E, for direction and discussion, we have South Whitehall Township E Newsletter Creation, Implementation and Annual Calendar. And we'll ask our Director of Parks and Recreation, Lynn Matula, to please present.
Hello, thank you. It's a little taller than me, but. So South Whitehall Township publishes a bi-annual newsletter. It's been redesigned over the years and recently we implemented various design changes to try to respond to feedback, resident feedback regarding readability, content and modernization. We did make progress with that and more design changes are planned, but that feedback prompted staff to examine alternative, alternative methods to distributing important township information to the residents. Staff is making the following two recommendations for the board to discuss. Staff recommends the township phase out a traditional printed newsletter and create an e-newsletter using a subscription service created specifically for this type of communication. Several reasons being cost savings, flexibility and frequency, quality, meaning using the proper software or tool to have it be visually appealing, readable on all devices and in the body of an email, not as an attachment, would address some of the resident feedback or attempt to address resident feedback of content. So there would be only relevant content, very seasonal, because we could do it more frequently. Readability, simply scrolling down through your email and modernization where we would have the ability to include images and direct links right back to the website, increasing convenience for our residents then. So if they saw information about a public works date leaf collection, they could click and go straight to the webpage and get more information. To address computer access concerns, residents who don't have access to internet, to the internet or a computer would be able to pick up printed copies of these e-newsletters, sorry, in the municipal building lobby. We would also determine the best way for them to request a printed copy be mailed to them. So we would set up a program that someone could actually request that these still be mailed to them. We would evaluate the best way to do that. The second recommendation from staff is to consider the creation of an annual calendar with important dates and seasonal information with the opportunity for advertisements to still be mailed to residents. So this would distribute all township important dates. They'd have all the dates in one spot for the whole year. It would address part of that feedback of seasonal content. No dates would be missed in between that bi-annual newsletter. It helps address any issues with access to a computer or internet. Meeting dates would be in there, all those kind of important dates. Design costs. We estimate for budgeting purposes that the design cost of the calendar would be similar to one printed newsletter, although we estimate also that that will decrease after that first initial design change. Once we have that design, we estimate that it would be cheaper than our traditional newsletter. But we can, we can kind of use that number to help us figure out our, our general costs or cost savings. Financially, and as you have in the memo, we were looking at marketing tools to help us create this e-newsletter. Narrowed down to two basic options that had the ability to handle our needs. One was through a subscription service called Constant Contact. The other one was through our website as another module or adding a module to our website. The annual cost for us, it's divided into tiers and it's based on the number of email accounts we might be utilizing or reaching out to. So our tier would be in the five thousand, ten thousand range, and that has us at a hundred and sixty dollars a month, one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars a year. They do offer nonprofits discounts as are listed there. So if we were to, there's no annual commitment, but if we were to do one year, we would save thirty percent. This tool is used by many municipalities and businesses and we got to speak to actual, an actual user, so we got some firsthand information on the usability, the, the ability to edit, change unlimited emails that also have access to social media. So there's other things that can be done with that subscription service. When comparing to the module from Granicus from our website, that cost is, is much greater. So that cost is eight thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars per year. There's also a one-time setup fee of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And this would be adding an entire module, which we actually wouldn't need the whole module. We would need a couple pieces, but there's no way to break that apart. So it's much more complicated, a little less user-friendly. Generally speaking, the budget impact for newsletters, your expense, you're looking at design, editing, printing, mailing, which really can vary from issue to issue. In two thousand and twenty-three, last year, we worked to try to bring that cost down. We worked with KS A and D and we decreased some of the page count trying to visibly smooth out the issue, make it a little more readable, added some advertisements, but tried not to have it be interrupting the content as much. We did get, we did decrease it by six thousand dollars. So we did work on a six thousand dollar decrease. But we kind of feel like that is the happy medium of number of advertisers, readability, you know, making the content look nice. So with that cost decrease, if you compare that to the e-newsletter, Constant Contact subscription, that cost savings would be four thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars if you eliminated the newsletter and just did the e-newsletter. If you did the e-newsletter and the annual calendar, you would still have a cost savings of approximately one thousand six hundred sixty, sorry, one thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. So at this time, staff is requesting discussion and direction from the Board of Commissioners regarding the following items: the creation and implementation of an e-newsletter, the discontinuation of the bi-annual newsletter in its current form, a subscription to Constant Contact for the design and distribution of an e-newsletter, the commencement of a printed and mailed annual calendar with ads.
Lynn, thank you. That's a lot of information. Thank you for compiling it all. It's very readable and understandable. I want to compliment staff for working to maximize our connection and our information that we always want to share with our residents. And certainly in favor of moving forward with your suggestion. I think our newsletter that we currently send out has been the same newsletter for multiple years. I have multiple copies at home going back over a decade, and they're very nice, they're very informative, but I think what you're presenting to us this evening is will give us a better opportunity to bring more real-time information to people that they can have. And I appreciate the fact that you've got an option to actually send a printed copy to those who don't have computers or prefer not to have a digital contact with the township. So I commend you for bringing this to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any way to, this is the first time we send this out, to get a sense of whether our residents would prefer a digital format or printed? How will we approach that?
We've discussed several ways to do that, and we can certainly continue to discuss that to find the best option. One option was creating a copy, emailing it out, but also then mailing it out also, because then you're, you're talking about possibly a one to two-page item versus a twenty-four-page item. Mailing it out saying, you know, with a return form, would you like this emailed? Would you like it mailed? Or even just simply, would you like to continue to receive this in the mail and have that mailed back? And if you don't mail it back, you'll get it digitally. So we, we were discussing different ways to do that. We definitely could hash those details out and figure out the best way to do that, but that was something that we discussed, how to just put it out there the first time around and see what people want.
Excellent. And last question, if we were to go with Constant Contact, is there a possibility to add a click on the homepage of our website if someone lost their newsletter or wanted to look back to last month's issue? Will we be able to keep them on the website?
Yes.
So there's a history of them?
Yes, we should be able to keep them on the website. We'll be able to have a link right on our website for them to register right through Constant Contact. So we wouldn't even have to manage a new email list, per se. We'd be able to utilize our other email list. So for recreation, our software Rec Desk, I have nine thousand emails in that, or nine thousand accounts in that software. So however many emails that actually boils down to, I can take that list and just upload it into Constant Contact. We don't have to try to create a new list and they'll automatically delete duplicates. So if someone says, yes, I want to register for your newsletter and they happen to also have an account in Rec Desk, that's not doubling our number and changing our pricing tier, because that could end up being double the accounts, but they'll go in and, and delete the duplicates. So it'll be really easy for people to even sign up for that, even if they don't want to sign up for recreation information. It can be totally separate.
Excellent. Sounds fantastic. I will open it up to the board members to comment.
I really appreciate the thought and time you put into that. I think it's a great idea. And I want to also thank you for having that hard copy option, because not everybody as a computer is computer savvy, wants it. So I think those residents should have that option, whether they want the hard copy or the e-copy. But I think it's a fantastic idea. And it is a way to disseminate information and quickly currently it keeps people up to date. So thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
So how, how, how often will you disseminate these? Is it still twice a year?
It will depend. We, if we could start out thinking quarterly, maybe if we realize that we're able to handle it, it could even be monthly. There's no limit to how many we can send out through the subscription. It's really- It's really based on, they price you on the number of email accounts. So really, it could be whatever we think we can handle, kind of internally.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see, like quarterly, something like that. And if you were, if we had a business, a local business within the township that wanted to advertise, or it would be an easy way for them to reach their potential clients?
Yes.
Like Albright's Hardware, for example. Could they advertise on the E newsletter as well?
We left that as an option open. I think it would definitely be fewer advertisements, maybe even just simply one per issue. The, you know, the idea being that it's, it's easy to scroll through, get some information out. I think the advertisement, more advertisements would be in the calendar.
So you could have a, you could have a business sponsor the quarterly E newsletter?
You could, as long as it, I, part of it is not interfering with the content the way that it's can now. So if, if it's maybe at the bottom, or, you know, maybe-
Right.
We could do, we discussed, like very minimal, maybe one. But yeah, I think that would be great. And either way, if they were interested in that, there could be a link right in that E newsletter that says, want to advertise your business? And then we give them the information for the calendar, Recreation Events, other things that they can sponsor and just hopefully get a lot more traffic just by clicking.
Yeah, something that the local businesses can get out of it, not just the-
Yeah.
Residents, but-
Absolutely.
Good point.
Piggybacking on that, we have new businesses opening up all the time. It would be a good way to advertise for them and to support the new businesses. Hey, this is coming here in this location, or this just had a ribbon cutting, support our businesses. So that, yeah, you know, not only our existing businesses, but new smaller businesses that are moving into the township.
Any other comments, board? We have what you need from us then, Tom and Lynn? Okay, excellent. Well, we look forward to updates and moving forward with this new newsletter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Moving on to agenda item ten C, we have a request for proposal RFP for police body worn cameras and in-car camera systems. I'll ask our Police Chief Glenn Dorney to discuss.
Thank you. This is just an update, going back to the December twentieth meeting of last year. VOC approved the rejection of bids to restructure the bid specs and bid response tally sheet. The Police Department Administration and Purchasing Agent Donna Zacharou worked on the restructuring, the request for proposal document, and are prepared to move forward with the updated RFP, which you granted authorization to do at that meeting to rebid. Some of the substantial dates involved in this would be solicitation date of February twelfth, question clarification deadline February twenty-first, and proposal deadline of February twenty-sixth, with hopefully an award at the March sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting. So that's just the update as of right now. And hopefully, we can get that out and advertised and hit the ground running March sixth.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for bringing that update to the board. We certainly do look forward to seeing this on the agenda in March. Are there any board comments?
So in a month, we could potentially have new body cameras and car, in-car cameras?
No.
I mean, awarded-
Awarded, yes. And then it's probably at least a minimum of three to six months.
Is that enough time for the vendors to put together a-
Yeah.
Package?
They put some pretty substantial packages together last time. We're expecting most likely probably be the same bidders. There were some language that they didn't understand in the initial bid package. And there was a pretty wide array of responses. Some knew about the equipment that we have in the cars, some did not. So they weren't truly apples-to-apples bids. So we wanted to give everybody the fair shake to make sure that we had the accurate bids that needed to be done, so we could do our due diligence to make sure we're getting the best product for the best cost. So.
Very good.
Okay.
There is no old business this evening. Agenda item twelve, courtesy of the floor. Again, opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any non-agenda items. Sure, if you come up to the microphone, please give us your name and address for the record. Yes.
Yeah, my name is Don Sheetsley. I live at fourteen eleven Hampton Road. And first, I think what you're doing is great on the electronic ladder. I think it just makes sense to get us into the current era. Then we let people keep better informed what we're doing. Plus, I think it's great if we're going to have ads. One thing I could add, and this is just me because I know me, is just, are you the group that should look at maybe down the road getting digital sign-in front? We're trying to keep people better informed what's going on?
We will take that under advisement. That's the management-
Let's make sure it passes zoning.
Make sure that's what?
Make sure it passes zoning.
Oh, it will be. We know that. The only reason I came tonight was to thank you for all you do. That's really why I came. I didn't know she was coming. It's for what Herb does, what Dave does, what Lauren does, what you all do is just fantastic. You're so professional. You take care of it. You save her money. You do a great job. You respond back to people's concerns. Somebody you know, I sat through a different township and I was embarrassed by how the meeting went compared to yours. So it just made me feel so much better. I live in South Whitehall. You're so professional, what you do. And so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. We appreciate you. Any other member of the public who'd like to address the board this evening? Is there anyone online? Dave? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
Some moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have no executive session. I need a motion to adjourn.
Some.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This motion is adjourned.